Good morning. I'd like to call the regular scheduled planning commission for August 14, 2025. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda, Ms. Greer?
All the updates were published yesterday, except there was a public comment that we passed out to you.
Thank you. Ms. Schenk, is there anything from the county attorney's office?
No changes.
Ms. Schenk, could you, or Ms. Greer, could you describe what the planning commission's role is?
Well, I think Sarah was gonna, I think Ms. Gay had a question, and then I think Sarah was, or Camila was gonna go over that.
Okay, sounds cool. Can we do that at this time, or we want to just keep moving forward?
Whatever you like.
Right now, it's fine.
Okay, good morning, commissioners. Basically, why I was asking you to just go over the rule of the planning commission and the limitations you have on when you have these quasi-additional land use public hearings. And these public hearings are two groups. One is quasi-additional. It's anything that's site-specific, where you're approving development entitlements, such as rezoning, preliminary site plans, general development plans, and your legislative is mostly your council plan amendments and LTC text amendments. And the rules regarding expedite communications apply only to quasi-additional items, because you, like judges, you have to decide based upon the evidence in the public hearing record. And that means not who tried to send you an email before the hearing, and we ask commissioners not to engage in attending neighborhood workshops or meeting with individual people on specific projects. Now, the way the Florida legislature in Section 286.0115 addressed expedite communications, that they acknowledge, you know, they happen. So although they are presumed to be prejudicial, as long as you keep an open mind, you're allowed to engage them if, for instance, written emails may part of the public hearing record during the hearing by the staff. So we ask you to forward all the emails to staff. You are all allowed to cite visits to get familiarity with the area, but we ask you to disclose a site visit on the record when the chair asks for disclosure of expedite communications. And all communications are best avoided regarding substantive comments on specific projects, because you're supposed to approach with an open mind. But if there's inadvertent oral communication, we ask you to disclose certain items in the record in accordance with County Resolution 05179. And that's the name of the person, the subject matter of the communication, the date it occurred. As you can see, if you had 20 expedite communications verbally, you would have to keep track of the name, the subject matter, and the date of each communication. So it does become cumbersome. So we ask you, if you can, to avoid expedite communications, but we know they do happen. And this is all because the land decisions are quasi-additional. So that's in a very brief nutshell.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schenk. I just have one follow-up question. Can you clarify whether the role of the planning commission is advisory or executive in that I believe that there is some confusion on whether we actually make planning plans and things, or are we strictly advisory?
The planning commission is strictly advisory. You can advise the board that you recommend a certain comp plan amendment, an LTC amendment, or specific topic, and you do see proposed amendments in that nature come before your public hearing. And you're solely advisory in the quasi-additional items such as rezoning, site plans, and like.
Thank you. At this time, approval of July 10, 2025 minutes. Messenger one. And Mr. Bauer's second.
Thank you.
I missed a month, and now I forgot everybody's name. Any other discussion? It passes five.
Seven.
With Ms. Kaba, oh, yes, six to zero with Ms. Kaba abstaining.
Oh, you, absent.
Absent, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yep, I'll tell you. Let's move on to citizen comments. This is for consideration for future agenda items that are not on today's agenda. Each person will be limited to three minutes. Please step forward. At this time, let's close citizen comments. Oh, okay.
You may step to the podium.
You have to step forward, ma'am.
You have to come to the podium.
Do you have an issue?
You have to step forward, ma'am.
Okay, well, do you have an idea of which issue you're going to discuss right now, or may I just open the floor?
So this is citizen comments on non-agenda items, items that are going to come before the board.
Okay, so I think my issues are on the agenda. That's what I was asking for. Thank you.
When we open that up. You're welcome. If you plan on speaking today, please stand up to be sworn in for most items. And if you don't, you're gonna have to probably stand up anyway eventually.
Even if you think you may talk, if you could please stand and raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations you're about to make to the planning commission are truthful and accurate? Thank you. When you step to the podium, please state your name, county of residence, and if you've been sworn.
Thank you. Can we go ahead and read item number one into the record?
Item number one, PDR 2327ZP, State Road 70 multifamily Bradenton Project LLC. It's quasi-judicial, and Laura Gonzalez is here for staff. It's a request of the applicant that this item be continued to no date set and re-advertised.
With that, do we do a motion? We open up the, we already have it open. Is there any public comments on this issue? At this time, I'll close public comments. Can we have a motion? So moved by Ms. Gay, seconded by Ms. Prosser. Please cast your votes. Motion passes six to zero with Ms. Kaba absent.
Item.
Yes, ma'am.
Item number two, PA 2413, Ordinance 25-30. This is for Lorain CPA Small-Scale Comprehensive Map Amendment, and also the Lorain Road Rezone. These two items, Items Two and Items Three, have been withdrawn. Item number four.
Pertaining to the item just mentioned, my name is James Toulon, a Manatee County resident. I came here today to speak in opposition to this, and a little confused right now.
The applicant has withdrawn the application, so it's not even moving forward in the system any longer. They're not proposing.
Does that mean that it is withdrawn from today's meeting, or the project has been withdrawn?
The project has been withdrawn.
Totally.
Totally. They may resubmit at a later time with a new project if they want, but the project as it is today has been withdrawn.
What was the basis for that? Why was it withdrawn?
We don't know, sir.
We don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item number four.
Item number four, Z 2412 Contra Reno Rezone. CJ Mills is here for planner, for our planner, and it's a rezone of approximately 1.66 acres from A1 agricultural suburban to RSF3 residential single-family three, located on point three five, or located point three five miles east of 16th Avenue East and approximately 540 feet west of 24th Avenue East on the north side of 37th Street East, and commonly known as 2214 37th Street East Palmetto.
Thank you. Has there been any expedite communication in this? This item is presented upon request. Can we have the applicant do a brief presentation?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, planning commissioners. For the record, my name is Bob Schmidt with Land Planning Associates, and I do reside in Manatee County. This is a small 1.66 acre parcel that was previously platted. That is Lot 3 of Mendoza Estates, I believe. And my client contacted me. The intent here is to split the lot, and with 1.66 acres, you can't get two one-acre lots. So it is family. It's family-oriented, and they intend to keep it in the family. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, let's open up for public comment. Anybody coming forward to discuss this? At this time, let's close public comment. Is there any closing comments from the applicant? Can we have a motion, please?
So, as a reminder, we would need a verbal motion first to approve or deny, and then we can put it on the board.
Okay.
Thank you. To approve?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
My second.
And then we, then we'll put it on the board.
Okay. So, so moved by Mr. Essendorf, seconded by Mr. Bauer. Please cast your votes. Motion passes six to zero. We have item number five written, or six written in the record?
Yes, we're still under presentations upon request. Item number six, PDC 2435ZG, State Road 64, Bournside Boulevard, PDC Rezone. We have Laura Gonzalez here for staff. It's a rezone of 18.58 acre property, generally located at the southwest corner of the intersection of State Road 64 and Bournside Boulevard from A to PDC zoning district, approving a general development plan for a maximum of 250,000 square feet of commercial use and a schedule of permitted and prohibited uses as voluntarily proffered by the applicant.
Thank you. Has there been any expedite communication in this? Seeing none, could we have a brief presentation by the applicant?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commission. Kyle Grimes, Attorney with the Law Firm of Grimes Galvano here in Bradenton, and I have been sworn here today on behalf of the applicant, Castor Net Lease, and the property owner of SMR Northeast LLC. Try to keep this relatively brief, but just want to give a little background on this project. This is, as mentioned, a request for a rezone to plan development commercial for an eighteen-and-a-half acre site at the southwest corner of Bournside and State Road 64. This is a parcel as part of a greater development area in the county known as the Northeast Quadrant in your comprehensive plan. And back in 2018, SMR entered into a local development agreement with the county for the long-range planning of this area, the majority of the Northwest, Northeast quadrant. And let me go to, there's the site identified there in red, and the Northeast Quadrant Local Development Agreement, as I mentioned, set out the long-range planning for this area. It identified the areas for residential, which you see in the kind of salmon color there, and the areas of commercial identified in the darker orange. This was a commercial parcel, C5, at the top-right corner of the map, and is currently allocated 250,000 square feet of commercial under that local development agreement. And when they did this agreement, they did a full build-out study of the whole area, transportation impact analysis, to identify the anticipated impacts of these, this entire development on the roadway network, and identified mitigation improvements. Those included completing the forelaning of E-line up to State Road 64, the forelaning of 44th Avenue from Lorain out to Bournside, and providing the 120 feet of right-of-way for Bournside. There was also some other improvements in that agreement that weren't mitigation, but other improvements done, including extending rangeland from Lorain to Bournside, as well as a couple of others. So all this to say, this was a project that's been long-planned, master-planned in the area for the residential and commercial, and under the county's old concurrency, transportation concurrency model, they mitigated all their traffic impacts upfront. All those improvements have been completed. And so now that we've gotten to the stage where the residential has largely been completed or coming online soon, it's the appropriate timing to provide those non-residential support uses, plan to, to provide commercial areas and things for those residents. With regard to the site plan itself, just to kind of give you an idea of what it's gonna look like, we are proposing two access points to State Road 64, as well as one to Bournside Boulevard. The large wetland you see to the south, that is not part of this development site. That has already been dedicated, the wetland and 30-foot buffer area, to the Lakewood Ranch stewardship district for maintenance and preservation. I do want to note, we have been working closely with the fire department, which owns that site there at the top-right corner. We worked with them on doing a land swap to square up their parcel and provide access to this parcel. And the developers under contract with the fire department to build that access, which will also serve that fire department's site. So with that, you know, we're happy to get into any of the other details if you have specific questions. Otherwise, we've worked closely with your staff. We agree with the findings of the staff report that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code, and request your recommendation of approval.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Sure.
Mr. Grimes, there's a ditch that runs on the south side of the property. Is that correct?
The.
Did I read that correctly?
There, I believe so. Our engineer is, had a flat tire and is on the way in, but.
Good morning. For the record, Rhea Hunter with RVI Planning. I have not been sworn, so.
If there's anyone else in chambers who plans to speak before the board and has not been sworn in, if you could please rise. Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations you're about to make to the planning commission are truthful and accurate? Thank you. When you step to the podium, please state your name, county of residence, and if you've been sworn.
Thank you. Once again, Rhea Hunter with RVI Planning. I'm a resident of Sarasota County, and I have been sworn. So yes, there are two ditches. As you can see, the light blue kind of shows their location. They're in the southern portion of the site. Right now, we have not completely site-planned this, so we're not sure as to whether those ditches are going to be retained in the final site plan or if they would be rerouted or moved to some extent. But as you can see, they are really in the southern portion of the property, and we expect that we're orienting development more towards the northern portion of the property with frontage on State Road 64. So ultimately, that design will come when we get to the PSP or FSP stage.
Okay. My only concern was whether or not that, how important that ditch is for drainage, and like we've had issues before, having access, so who's responsible for the maintenance of the ditch for stormwater and runoff purposes? That was my only main concern.
Right, and I think everything that's on the property will be under the maintenance of, you know, the property owner. As Kyle just mentioned, the wetland to the south is going to be owned and maintained by the Lakewood Ranch stewardship district. So finally, it'll be kind of in collaboration. But ultimately, the stormwater for this property will go through that robust engineering model and ultimately would have to be maintained by the property owner.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, let's open it up for public comment. Please step forward. At this time, let's close public comment. Staff, any? Nothing? All right, we don't have any questions. Anything? Applicant, anything? At this time, could we get a motion?
Motion to approve.
So we have a motion from Ms. Gay, Mr. Essendorf with a second. Motion passes six to zero. Item number seven, please.
Item number seven, PDC 2434P Chipotle Mexican Grill. We have CJ Mills here representing staff, and it's for approving a preliminary site plan for a 2,325 square foot restaurant with a drive-through on approximately 0.81 acres. The site is currently zoned PDC and located on the southwest side of 33rd Street East and 53rd Avenue East.
Has there been any expedite communication in this? Not seeing any. Could we have the applicant do a brief presentation?
Hi, good morning. Linda Stewart, Planner with Morris Engineering, representing the applicant. Okay, this is for Chipotle Mexican Grill on 53rd Avenue East. It's currently, it's zoned PDC. We're not asking for a zoning change on this. It's consistent with the adjacent uses. The future land use is ROR. We're not requesting a modification to the future land use on this. The history of the property, it was initially constructed as a commercial use in 1990. It was a mobile gas station, which the building is still there, but it's an unoccupied site right now. There was a, I believe it was a car wash that had applied for a preliminary site plan approval, but that was withdrawn and never came to the board. So the previous PSP application expired, so we are requesting a PSP for a Chipotle restaurant to be constructed on this piece of property. It's a 2,235 square foot restaurant with a drive-through. This is the new drive-throughs where you don't have a menu board and you don't order on the property. You order online, and the drive-through is just to drive-through and pick up what you've ordered. So it's a lot more friendly to the neighbors, so you don't have the menu boards and the speakers and things like that for the neighbors. There's two existing driveways on this, one on 53rd, which is State Road 70, and the other being on 33rd. State Road 70 entrance is a right-in only. The existing entrance that's located on the eastern side is a right-in, right-out only. They have received a design exception from Manatee County for the existing spacing of that driveway. Here's a copy of the existing site right now with the mobile gas station that will be taken down. Here's a copy of the site plan that we are proposing, showing the buffers and the drive-through with the existing driveways. Here's a blow-up of that so that you can see it a little bit better for the internal circulation for the property. This is a typical elevations of what the new Chipotles look like. Development trends in the area. It's an infill development with commercial uses all around the property, which is compatible with the existing neighbors. Residential subdivisions around the property. Having commercial in close proximity to the residential uses, again, reduces trips on the roadways. Buffers are in compliance with the land development code. I discussed the accesses. There's an existing five-foot sidewalk along the adjacent roadways. Internal sidewalks will connect to those. An environmental report was not required due to the existing conditions of the parcel. Utilities are existing. Stormwater will be dry retention on the property. It's not in a flood zone. The sidewalks are existing to both of them. They will be extending a right-turn lane on 53rd Avenue for access to the property. Report was prepared by Kimley Horn. And we believe that the property is in compliance with the land development code and the comprehensive plan, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant?
You had mentioned... Sorry. You had mentioned that this was a former mobile gas station.
Yes.
Obviously, you're going to tear the building down. What about the tanks that were in the ground for the gas?
Well, they will...
Are they going to be removed?
They will comply with all FDEP regulations with the gas tanks.
All right. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Actually, can I view this site similar to the Chick-fil-A on Manatee Avenue? Will you have an extended lane turning into Chipotle from 33rd? I'm just thinking about the traffic that's heading west on State Road 70 is going to make a left on 33rd. And I could foresee people on 33rd heading north, potentially doing a U-turn. So that entrance on the 33rd Street East side...
Let me bring up someone from Kimley Horn who can answer that question for you.
Good morning. Becca Bond with Kimley Horn, and I have been sworn. Let me pull up really quickly the distribution for this site. I will admit, there are anticipated U-turns that are expected here. I will say that the majority of the trips, based on our distribution model, will be coming from the DOT roadway primarily. I will say that there is an extension of the turn lane on the DRT roadway, or FDOT roadway, excuse me. There is no turn lane proposed on the north-south county roadway simply because it doesn't meet turn lane requirements. It doesn't meet the thresholds for a turn lane. There's not a high enough number to warrant that. And the spacing from the intersection is fairly short. There are improvements proposed... Let's again, really quickly, let me open this up. There are improvements proposed for, to accommodate U-turns. So restriping of the intersection just south of this, along 33rd East. So it's the Wong Kai Imports driveway is where that is. We're going to be restriping it to allow for a safer movement there for U-turns that are anticipated along 33rd. As for people traveling northbound, honestly, I would expect them likely to reroute themselves. I don't think there's going to be a lot of movements, based on our distribution, coming northbound on 33rd to the site. Of course, it is a potential. But as I mentioned, the right-turning movements into the 33rd driveway aren't anticipated to be high enough to warrant a turn lane there.
Any additional questions? Thank you. Let's open this up for public comment. Please step forward. Not seeing any staff closing comments or nothing. Applicant closing comments? Nothing. May I have a motion?
A motion to approve. Second.
Do we have Ms. Presser and Mr. Essinger? Motion passes six to zero. Item number eight, please.
Item number eight, LDCT 2505, ordinance 25-31. It's a county-initiated land development code text amendment, and it's a Chapter III general cleanup. We have Elizabeth Schulman here for staff. It's amending Manatee County Land Development Code, Chapter III Review Authority and Procedures, Section 330. General requirements updating references and providing clarification. It's also revising Section 330.2, revising language to provide clarification on subdivisions and lot splits.
Ms. Game.
Elizabeth Schulman, Senior Planner, and I have been sworn. So this is a county-initiated land development code text amendment. And basically, it's eliminating confusion on what is required for lot splits for different departments and divisions. And it clarifies that the applicant must provide boundary surveys for each parcel in addition to sketch and descriptions on parcel splits. So updates made in this code amendment reflect current business processes. We're not adding any new requirements or adding any different language. We're just making the code more clear to reflect what we already require and reflect what's already in our checklist. And this ensures the public is protected, and every division is satisfied that they're part of local and state statutes. The proposed changes are to Section 330.2, subdivision approval required for major subdivisions, minor subdivisions, lot splits, and in these specific sections of lot splits. And we request your approval.
Any questions for staff?
Just a brief question. So for instance, we had the proposal on the agenda today with a family wanting to split their lot. I'm thinking, why do they even have to come here to split their own lot when it stayed in the family?
I think that their lot didn't meet, like, we have a certain, under each future land use category, they have to have a certain amount of acreage, right? So they were coming back to modify...
They were less than two acres.
Oh, that's why you mentioned it wasn't able to split one acre per, therefore... So why is that important? What's, it was 1.6 versus two. Why is it important for government to regulate a 1.6-acre land split?
If their future land use category, it's about density, right? If you need, if you need at least one acre to build a dwelling unit, then you can't build two, you can't split the lot and have two lots that are under one acre in that future land use category. So they had to come in and modify their future land use category. Or, you know, see what I'm saying? It's a density issue.
I was just thinking, there's an easier way to do that without all the red tape, if you will.
It's how many dwelling units you can build per acre is a big deal.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Any additional questions? Thank you. At this time, let's open it up for public comment. Anyone from the public? At this time, let's close public comment. Anything additional from staff? At this time, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Bauer, first and second, and Mr. Essinger. Please cast your votes. Motion passes six to zero. Item number five.
Under presentation scheduled, item number five, PDMU 1422P R4 Travesta. We have James McDevitt here for staff. And it's amending zoning ordinance PDMU 1422P R2 and approving a revised preliminary site plan to increase from 100,000 to 150,000 square feet of commercial uses, creating commercial parcel E, and revising stipulations for a project on approximately 441.3 acres that is currently zoned PDMU.
Thank you. Has there been any export high communication in this? Not seeing any. Could we have the applicant's presentation, please?
Hi, good morning again. Linda Stewart, Planner with Morris Engineering, representing the applicant. I have been sworn. This is for Travesta Commercial. It's located on 69th Street East. The existing zoning is PDMU. We are not requesting zoning change for this project. And it is consistent with the existing PDMU in the surrounding area. The current future land use is UF3. We are not requesting a modification for this future land use, and it is consistent with the existing future land uses in the surrounding area. The property was initially approved in 2015 for a mixed-use development. We are requesting an amendment to the existing plan to increase the commercial square footage from 100,000 square feet to 150,000 square feet. And this will also create an additional parcel at the southern end of the development, parcel E, along Buffalo Road. Neighborhood use, commercial uses are what is approved for the overall Travesta development. We have no specific approval requests for this. And we have no, we have no specific uses that we are asking to be approved. This is just an increase in allowable square footage for the overall development. The size of Travesta is 441.3 acres. The allowable FAR is 0.35 under the UF3. Previously approved with what's currently approved with 100,000 square feet is 0.14. With the increase, it'll be 0.21, which is still very considerably below the 0.35 allowed. The open space required is 20%. We are providing 53%, obviously, in a large increase in the required open space. This is an overall aerial of the Travesta development. The site area on the northern end is where the existing commercial area is located. And the site area along the southern end is the small 0.23-acre parcel E that will be constructed once Buffalo Road is extended down to that area. This is a site plan showing those two areas in relation to the existing commercial and the residential within the development. For the development trends in the area, this is an infill development. It's located within the existing Travesta development, which is compatible with the existing developments around the property with commercial and residential. And again, commercial uses adjacent to the residential, serves the residential uses so that we can keep trips off of the roadway. Residential subdivisions within the area. Environmental was conducted by our bureau in December for the additional commercial use, and no listed species and no wetland areas are being impacted as a result of this request. The utilities are existing for the water and wastewater lines along 69th Street East and within the development. There is an existing private reclaim facility within the development. And in 2002, that was transferred from the developer of the property to a private water company for operation and maintenance. The stormwater utilizes onsite ponds. There's the existing infrastructure for the overall development. The FEMA floodplain zones are noted in purple. These are all the lake areas and water, and wetland areas. The existing access is provided on 69th Street East. Buffalo Road and Travesta Place are the two existing connections to 69th Street. Traffic report was prepared by Kimley Horn. We believe that this is in compliance with the Manatee County Land Development Code and comprehensive plan, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Is there any questions for the applicant?
I've got one. Stewart, the, I'm going to call it the smaller parcel at the bottom. I don't remember the size of it.
0.23.
0.23.
Yes.
The environmental study that is done for that area, is it just done on the 0.23 acreage? Or is it done on the surrounding area as well? Meaning...
It's just done on this to make sure that anything that is developed on that parcel, that we are not impacting any species or any vegetation on that parcel.
Just on the 0.23 parcel?
Correct. Travesta had an overall environmental study done, and that is on file with Manatee County.
No, I'm just looking for clarification on that.
Yes.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, a few. I remember presiding over this back in 2015. My understanding is, so at the time in 2015, part of the approval process was for the 100,000, right, of the commercial?
Correct.
But theoretically, could have asked for more.
Correct.
So, right now, why are we only asking for 150,000 versus more?
That is what the developer of the property has deemed that they are requesting at this time.
So my concern is, is that first started this process in 2015, got the approval, then another amendment some time ago for the special approval for parking and some other items, if not mistaken.
They asked, they had an amendment for adding multifamily, and they had a specific approval for reduction in the number of parking spaces required for the multifamily.
So my concern, what's stopping the developer from coming back again and going from 150 to 200? Because to me, it sounds like just to base all the process. My concern is, 50,000 more doesn't sound like a big deal. But can come back again for 50,000 more?
Well, there are limitations as far as the FAR for the overall property and densities that they cannot exceed. Those are already set. So if they come back, they cannot come back and exceed anything that's already established within the Manatee County code. And traffic will be analyzed, water management will be analyzed. Everything would be analyzed with each request they come back with.
Okay. What's, and forgive my lack of knowledge here, but why is a commercial parcel E being created? Why is that, why is that needed?
So, Matt Morris, I've not been sworn, for the record. I just came in, I had a flat tire on the way here today, but I wanted to help out with your first question. So I'd be happy to be sworn in right now.
Anyone else planning on speaking the rest of the day?
Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations you're about to make to the Planning Commission are truthful and accurate?
Yes.
Thank you.
Flat tires seems to be common this morning.
Sorry. So just to help out with the first part of your question, I think the answer to that is that commercial parcel up front on 69th Street has been fairly substantially built out now. So now there's, there's more knowledge of what's actually going to go there, what's actually going to fit there from a standpoint of, you know, can we really fit this other 50,000? I think we've actually already got 50,000 is probably more than what's actually going to go in there just because we can't physically fit more parking in there to do anything above and beyond that. So now that, now that the market's a little better known, they've already got users there, they've got MOIs coming in, we know what's actually going to go on that parcel up... they've got MOIs coming in, we know what's actually going to go on that parcel up front now, to know what's gonna be there. The .23 acre parcel, obviously, that's a very small parcel, so we're gonna be limited in square footage there from a parking standpoint, too. So, I don't, I don't think we could even physically fit more square footage on there and make it work within the parameters of code requirements for, you know, parking, stormwater setbacks, all that kind of thing. So, so I think we're, we're pretty confident that right now, 50,000 is probably even more than what's actually gonna end up going there to begin with at this point.
Okay. For the, for the purpose of the public, is there any difference in height or any, anything of any significance of what you can do at 100,000 versus 150,000?
Not that I'm aware of, and there's no intent to do anything different.
Okay. And then, before the applicant wraps up, I would like for them just to address some of the public comment issues, if you have anything to state to that.
I think Linda mentioned, as I was walking in, with regard to the irrigation system. So, the irrigation system, again, has been sold to a private company that's running that irrigation system. That's not the developer anymore. That's owned by a company that the HOA has a direct contract with that company. So, there's really nothing, the developer isn't involved in that company. It's not some subsidiary of the developer. It's a completely different company that owns that whole irrigation system at this point. So, obviously, the developer's gonna have to deal with them as well to make sure that they can get irrigation to their parcel. I think that was, from what I saw, one of the overriding, you know, concerns of the neighbors was the irrigation. But, you know, unfortunately, the developers are gonna have to deal with that as well as they're developing these, these two parcels, too, and work with that private company. So, there's, there's not a whole lot, unfortunately, that the developer can do at that point to, to compel that private company to really do anything other than continue to provide the water that they're obligated to provide to the, to the neighborhood. Was there another specific issue that you wanted?
So, on that note, so the irrigation has been basically farmed out to a private company. So, does the HOA have a separate contract that from, does the commercial property, do they have their own contract with this company?
I believe so. I'm not 100% sure exactly how all the contracts work between that irrigation company and all the other companies. But given that the, the commercial development is technically a different development, I don't think that they're part of the HOA. So, I, I believe, my understanding is that there's a contract between that company and the HOA, and then a contract with the commercial developer in that company as well. And, and I think a separate contract with the apartment complex and that private irrigation company as well. So, I think everybody's got their own separate.
For residential purposes, I think, wouldn't it be important to know whether or not those contracts are competing?
I'm not sure, competing in what sense?
I don't know. Well, if I'm the commercial property, I might want to make a deal where my property is priority. Does that make sense?
I'm not sure with the way the system was designed, that there'd be a way to
I don't know either.
Give priority with that. I mean, they'd have to go out and do some infrastructure improvements, things like that. There's effectively one pump station that pumps the water out into the system from the lake that feeds the residential, the commercial, the multifamily. It all feeds everything. So, I'm not sure, I, I don't think that there's the infrastructure in place right now without that company actually going out and adding new pipes and new valves and installing another pump or something like that, that they could give more water to that. But I, I don't know, admittedly don't know the answer to that, since I'm not involved in that private irrigation company. But based on the way that it was initially designed, I think that they'd be pretty hard-pressed to be able to say, okay, we're gonna give you more water and you less water.
Potentially, I can see it happening. But I guess my, my concern for you guys is that considering the overwhelming opposition to your project, and that being a large issue, I would wanna know those answers to be able to answer to the board, because you're gonna have to go to that same private company, right? Or you're, is if it's part of the same commercial owner or what have you, you're extending additional water sources where, I don't know whether it's true or not, but that's what the residents are saying, is that they're having water issues, right?
I will say, the, obviously, a commercial development has much smaller irrigation requirements than the residential development. We don't have homes with front yards. We've got basically landscape islands with drip irrigation for some trees and shrubs, and then a landscape buffer. So, it is, it is a very, a very minimal amount of irrigation that's required for the commercial versus what's required for the overall residential, but I
I'm not disagreeing with you at all. I'm just saying, it might make this process with the board a whole lot smoother if you somehow address that issue.
True.
Because I agree, that, that seems to be the largest issue within the community there. So, just throwing that out there for the time being.
And if you, I think there was one other concern that had been brought up, just regarding traffic and transportation. I mean, when TRAVESTA was constructed, they dedicated right-of-way for Buffalo Road. They built the first two lanes of Buffalo Road. There's right-of-way available, and it's already been dedicated to the county for future forelaning of Buffalo Road. I know the CDD's been working closely with the county on the extension of Buffalo Road down to Mendoza, I think it is, if I'm not mistaken, if I'm getting the name correct. So, the CDD's been working to provide temporary construction easements to the county to get that portion of the roadway constructed, which will help take some of the traffic off of that intersection at 69th and Buffalo Road as well. And the developers, you know, participated in, you know, previous payments for offsite improvements, turn lanes, things like that, up at 69th and Buffalo Road as well.
Any additional questions? On commercial, height-wise is 35 feet and under. That's what we're still proposing.
That's right. We're not proposing any change to the height.
Mr. Secretary?
Yeah, there was a, you, you made a comment, and I just wanted to make sure I'm clear, Mr. Morris. You had mentioned, we were talking about commercial parcel E, the smaller parcel. And I think the question from Commissioner Bauer was something along the lines of, why is it needed there? And you said, well, we really can't do wetlands and blah, blah, blah. Why do you need commercial parcel E?
There's already been some, some interest, from what I understand, from the developer, in doing some, some various things there. I'm not 100% sure what they are. They, they've done some studies, and they think that there is a need for some kind of commercial there, some kind of, you know, commercial endeavor there. I'm not
Let me go back to your comment, though, that you were making on it, saying that that parcel is so small that you won't be able to get water, water retention, everything else that's going on there.
No, no, no. That wasn't the intent of what I was saying. What I was getting at is the .23 acres. I don't think if we wanted to come back in and say, hey, we need another 50,000 square feet, that we would be able to put another 50,000 square feet on that .23 acre parcel after we put whatever required parking and things are in there.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
Just one. I know this is a preliminary site plan, but what are the intended, are you building to suit, or are there certain businesses that you know are already going in there?
Like I said, I, I've not been privy to any of the discussions. I know that there have been some discussions. I don't know what the company is, what the type of commercial is there, but I don't think we're asking for anything specific other than what would be allowed in the code for those, those uses there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have staff presentation?
Good morning, Planner Commission. For the record, James McDevitt with Development Services, and I have been sworn. Linda and Matt Morris did a great job of going through the project details, so I won't go over them again. I'll just highlight the parts that I want to have stand out. We all know where the site location is. We're at 441.3 acres in the UF3 PDMU zoning district. So, the portion of the property that is commercial parcel E is located within the entranceway. So, I'm gonna go back to this map of the zoning. There is a light pinkish area on the east side of I-75. That's, that's marking the entranceway. The entranceway just provides additional standards for higher-quality public image, standards for criteria and review, and enhances existing vegetative, vegetative communities. Ms. Stewart went over the history a bit, but I just want to mention that the previous two approvals for amendments to this application were for residential uses in nature. So, the single-family residential was amended in 2018 to include up to 341 units that were semi-detached or detached. It wasn't adding them, it was adding the option for them. And then in 2020, there was an increase from 1,103 dwelling units to 1,219, or, sorry, And that retained the 300 multifamily units, so that didn't increase. Also, with that amendment, they increased the building height for multifamily to four So, as Ms. Stewart mentioned, PDMU is the zoning district. There's no change, and the preliminary site plan is the same type of site plan. They are proposing changes to the site plan, but they are not changing to a general development plan. The residential entitlements, there are no changes to that. The commercial is increasing from 100 to 150,000, and they are creating commercial parcel E. So, this is the entire preliminary site plan page. And just to kind of zoom in on parcel E, .23 acres, as Ms. Stewart mentioned, the project does have .21 FAR for the entire site. The open space is met and exceeded by 53%. And the applicant is not requesting any specific approvals to DVA from LDC requirements. There is existing water and sewer from the county, and existing private reclaimed water in the area. And schools will not be impacted by the proposed commercial uses that are being added to this development. The nearest thoroughfares are 69th Street East and Buffalo Road. Buffalo Road has a future link, which has an adopted level of D, and with the project, it will operate at a C. And 69th Street has adopted a level of service of D, and will operate at an E or a D with a basis of arterial analysis. And I have Nelson Galliano here with staff to speak more on this, if you have questions. As I mentioned, there's no changes to specific approvals. The one specific approval on this development will remain. It's, meaning, it has to do with multifamily parking ratios. Positive aspects, the proposed increase in intensity is below the maximum permitted within the UF3. So, remember, we're at .21 versus .35. The proposed amendment will introduce neighborhood-serving commercial uses, which limits urban sprawl. The potable water and sewer facilities are available to the site. The project has frontage along 69th Street East and urban collector. However, commercial parcel E is within the project along Buffalo Road. They are providing 53% open space exceeding the 20% requirement, and more commercial opportunities near the residential developments have the potential to reduce trip lengths. No specific uses have been proposed or identified on commercial parcel E to analyze specific buffering, screening, or setback requirements. To mitigate this, only neighborhood-serving commercial uses will be established on parcel E. They'll be required to comply with all the applicable standards. Again, there's no specific approval, so there's no deviations for those. So, they'll have to meet all the setting, setbacks, screening, buffering requirements. The applicant will be required to pay their proportionate share for any improvements to infrastructure. There was updates to previous stipulations to reflect the consistency with the requests, and one additional stipulation that only neighborhood-serving commercial uses may be established on commercial parcel E. Any proposed uses shall comply with all specific use criteria found in LDC Section 531, and staff shall review for compliance at time of final site plan. Staff reviewed for compliance with the Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Code. And the request can be found to be consistent with the policies of the Comprehensive Plan and the applicable standards of the Land Development Code. Staff will conduct a thorough analysis for compliance with these requirements at time of final site plans in the middle. I thank you, and I'm welcome. Any questions?
Any questions for staff? And right now?
Thank you.
Let's open this up for public comment. Please step forward, state your name and county you live in, and that you have been sworn.
Hi, Catherine Castrava, Manatee County, President of the TRAVESTA Home Owners Association. Regarding the proposed TRAVESTA expansion, while we recognize the need for growth, this plan directly enables a developer who has repeatedly replaced profit over the wall being of our neighborhood knowingly creating conditions at harm of residents, hundreds of families who must then bear the consequences. These are predictable, preventable problems the developer is fully aware of and chooses to ignore, because, again, they are profitable. The county must not approve additional projects without requiring meaningful solutions to the existing failures. Failure number one, irrigation. TRAVESTA's irrigation system operates under a swift mud permit that does not provide enough water for current residential needs, and it is regularly shut off for months at a time. A year ago, our water was off for an entire year. The proposed commercial parcel E will draw from the same overdrawn supply, worsening the problem. The most troubling fact, BK TRAVESTA, Kulture, is responsible for building the TRAVESTA community. They're fully aware of the insufficient water supply, and yet they continue and ask for more land, amend, amend, amend. Kulture offers no remedy for the water shortage, despite knowing it has direct impact on hundreds of families. A straightforward solution that I propose here does exist. The county should require Kulture to fund the infrastructure to bring reclaimed water into the community before considering further expansion. And reclaimed is accessible just up 69th Street. Failure number two, lack of infrastructure. TRAVESTA is one of the newest communities, yet it was among the last in Manatee County to have power restored during Hurricane Milton. Adding commercial parcel E guarantees more bottlenecks, longer recovery times, greater vulnerabilities when disaster strikes. If the county allows this expansion without major infrastructure investment first, it will knowingly be placing thousands of our residents at greater risk. Failure number three, environmental impact. The environmental report prepared by Ardua in December 2024 for Kulture claims there are no active bald eagle nests identified on site of the proposed commercial parcel E, and yet TRAVESTA residents regularly observe a bald eagle in the exact location. Arcus mapping, which documents eagle nesting sites, has a nest identified directly on parcel E. The area also supports osprey, herons, eaglets, sandhill cranes, skimmers, mallards, hawks, owls, and hengas, turtles, otters, alligators. This ecosystem will be threatened by the development without mandating proper environmental safeguards. Please do not trust anything they put on paper. Bottom line, the county has the power to stop enabling a developer who knowingly overbuilds without addressing the consequences. If the developer wants to keep building, they should and must find first correct the harm they have directly caused. The Manatee County Planning Commission must reject or delay approval of this project until the critical problems are addressed first. Please, and thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
Ma'am, the applicant stated about the irrigation system being
Yes.
Put to a, a private company. How long ago did that happen?
So, I'm accompanied by Dave Roy. He can answer that better. But I will answer the question to the best of my ability. So, you have to look into the paperwork, and you'll see that the builder asked for an initial, initial swift mud permit. That's approximately 220,000 gallons a day. We currently use 660,000 gallons a day. That swift mud permit has not been amended. And then through the history of the paperwork, if you'll look, the developer then basically gave the, you know, the water rights to itself. Then they passed it off to FWU, and you wanna say, hey, that's another private company. But what they did is they bound us into a 30-year contract. Now, we could try to break that next year, but the drama there is that now they claim that the pipes, they own the entire infrastructure. So, what is this neighborhood supposed to do? Build our own pipes? Spend millions of dollars to try to buy that infrastructure piece? And you know Kulture knows about all of this, because then they went and installed two water wells that don't do anything but dry up during droughts as well. And again, that reclaimed water is available right down 69th. They should have tapped into that, they should have brought it here. We have a lot of people who are older than 55 in our neighborhood. We have a lot of disabled. The remedy has continually been to self-water your lawn. And there are a lot of people who can't physically get out and water their lawn as a remedy for not having the right water. And I'm gonna add one more comment here. MI Homes is one of the builders on the property. It is a huge selling point for them. It is why I moved into the neighborhood, too. Your water is included in your HOA dues. And so, what do you know? I move in, and the water's not included. I, I don't have water for 12-plus months during the drought. There is no second source of water except for hand watering. A lot of people's lawns died because they physically couldn't get out there. There is a lot of shady stuff that happened, and I implore this commission to look further into it before you allow parcel E. And I really appreciated a lot of what you had to say earlier, Mr. Bauer, because you talk about what's gonna keep them from going from 50K to 100,000 for a parcel lot. It's not. They amended something in 2015. They asked for a larger land in 2018, and then they have not brought any solutions to our neighborhood since then, and they've had five years. So, really, the question is, in the since inception, why haven't they brought better solution? We have, as a neighborhood, asked them over and over and over again to support the neighborhood that they built.
Thank you for that. And just a recommendation for you going to the board, whether eagles or whatever's on land, this issue, whatever documentation or pictures that you might have
We have that.
That's, that's gonna be important, for the record, if you want the board to potentially rule in your favor or against them, kind of thing. But as it relates to the irrigation water and how that unfolded, I would suggest that you document that to provide to the county staff or the board as much as you can.
Yes, we actually had the commissioner of, I'm trying to think of that, which commissioner it was, but we had an event called we were, but we had an event called Water Matters. So we brought out the commissioner. We brought the head of government affairs for swift mud. We brought the director of Manatee County potable water, just to talk about the different sources. And then some options were have a little well in your backyard, which we don't have that option. It's not in our bylaws to allow it. And so we've been hogtied to this situation and told otherwise when we were buyers in this community. And the constant response is, oh, well, now it's in the hands of the HOA to your responsibility. But it was a very calculated thing that Coulter did, and they migrated from one contract to another. There's even questionable contracts where it's the same person signing off on two signature lines. So I'm asking the commission to look into this more before you consider allowing this builder to keep repeating the same offenses and taking from the community that they're supposed to be supporting. The parcel E says here, Manatee County suggests that it be used to support the neighborhood, be it some kind of commercial property to our benefit, is what I'm understanding. But nothing benefits us there behind Bedini. It's going to cause traffic congestion when they build out 69. That's already going to create crime in our neighborhood potentially and extra through traffic. So we're already going to be battling 69th Street. We really don't need parcel E. There's no benefit to it right at our gate. That's our gate. A lot of children are there playing, so I just really hope that you'll take this all into consideration, please.
Thank you for your time. Yes, sir. Please step forward. Your name, county you live in.
I live in Travesta, and I'm also the chairman of the Board of Supervisors for the CDD. I've been sworn. I had some presentation, but I'll just go pretty much answer what your questions are. The irrigation system, where they mentioned it's a private company, it's only been a private company for about two years. Travesta developed it, or BK Travesta, same company, Coulter, developed it under a different name, operated it, and then sold it off when things got, things became pretty bad as far as what they were doing. They have, they have sold it to a private company who does have, to your point, the ability to pump to the commercial without pumping to us. I have a copy of this, well, I can get you a copy of the swift mud pumping report that showed while we were off-site and they weren't pumping to us, they were still pumping 30,000 gallons a day. So that had to be going to the commercial area. The site in and of itself, we refer to it as F3. The reason it wasn't on the original $100,000 or 100,000 unit square foot of commercial was because it didn't exist as commercial at that point. It was just part of the CDD. It was going to be buffer and green space. On the day that Travesta, the developers handed over the, they handed over the board to the residents, before they did that, they voted that parcel out of the CDD to themselves so they could do this for further commercial use, and we appreciate you not letting them get away with that. It certainly didn't, it violated their judiciary, their fiduciary responsibility to the CDD. They did it certainly because of the fact that they might be able to cash cow it later. That's all I have any.
Thank you. Please step forward.
Good morning. My name is Ann Reynolds. I am Manatee County, born, bred, five generations, and I live right next to Travesta. So I'm going to do away with, yes.
And you have been sworn?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I'm going to do away with the history. You've had enough history. My property boards the lake. I watched Travesta come in and literally rape that land. They cut down trees, talk about the area that was just mentioned. It was said that it's not wetland. I walked that land yesterday on my side of the fence. It is wetland. It is deemed wetland. It is deemed natural habitat. The eagle that is now coming around is not the original eagles that would fish out of that lake. The lake, when I moved in in 99, was 35 feet deep. It is a lake, although a lot of people are calling it a borrow pit. Contractors don't dig a 10-acre borrow pit. It was used for irrigation for cows, cattle, horses. Since I have been there, before Travesta moved in, black panthers, Florida Panthers, alligators, and for the record, if people leave the alligators alone, they will leave you alone. The lake came up within three feet of my property. Travesta came in with backhoes, took the water out of there, put in five two-foot culverts, pumped to 19 different borrow pits. The pump outside and on the commercial that shows the water squirting up came from lake. The sprinkling system that they're talking about, for 1,400 homes, that water came out of the lake. Swift mud came out, put some stipulations into it. Their stipulation guideline is to keep that lake at 28.5, I think, feet. As of right now, five feet is the deepest. It used to be 35 feet deep when I moved in in 99. In front of my house, it used to be three feet to my property line. It is now 30. Travesta pulled dirt from all around the lake to build peninsulas for more homes. The area that they're talking about on the south end is pure and simple, natural wetland. The eagles that used to fly, guess what? The nest was taken down. Oh, and not only that, there was a white owl nesting in a 100-year-old oak tree that I watched Travesta go across the line, take that tree down, along with the white owl. These are endangered animals. The turtles, the land turtles, don't exist. They're gone. So whoever says that the parcel on the south end is needed for commercial, give it a break. Travesta has raped this land, pure and simple, and I hope and pray that you guys, you answer to the voters. This is not in interest for our people behind us, our residents. They can't get water. You know why? Because there's no water in the lake. They were pulling out of the lake. She did mention about the recycled water. There are pipes across the street. All they have, and for three years, I have researched this, wrote letter after letter to the county commissioners, came to the board meetings, was told I could do my PowerPoint. Once I got here, I was denied. So here I am again. This is an absolute terrible use of land. Leave it in the, my three minutes are up. I get that. Leave it in the hands of the wildlife and let the eagles come back, hopefully. I rest my case. Don't let Travesta keep raping this land.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the public? Yes, please step forward.
Mary Ann Cardenas, Manatee County. I have been sworn in. I'm not the best with words or anything, but I just wanted to make a, I don't know if the microphone is on.
Maybe you need to get closer.
I'm very soft-spoken. Sorry. Okay. Mary Ann Cardenas, Manatee County. I have been sworn in. I just wanted to say, I would hope that there would be a revision for this, if anything, just for not taking any of that reclaimed water that's already tapped in. If they could just revise that. I mean, that's pretty much what everybody's saying. It's already getting shut off, so they're not going to be able to have it anyway. So they might as well just tap in to the other reclaimed water that's already there, and hopefully this doesn't go through until then. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Tim O'Meara, Manatee County. Also been sworn in.
Please state your name again. I'm sorry.
Tim O'Meara.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of Travesta, have been for the last five years, and basically want to echo what everybody else is saying. We pay for a irrigation system that has been off for more than it's on, and the commercial properties do get precedent. Their lawns are getting watered, while ours are not. So the other thing, too, that I don't understand is, if you're going to allow a piece of property to be developed commercially, they should acknowledge what that's going to be, not just the hyperbole of, we're going to build a 150,000-square-foot piece of property. So I think that's, as part of your commission's duty, you should also represent what could be there. And my experience with what Coulter has done is everything is shady, behind closed doors, and it's not fiction, it's fact, because we've obviously seen what they've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? At this time, let's close the public comment. Do we have the county staff environmental to discuss the area?
Good morning, Karrakina for staff. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, or would you just like some additional information on the site?
I'll decide in that one partial, whether there's bald eagles and
Sure. So, of course. So the site is considered open land, as shown in the environmental consultant's report. There are two wetlands that are immediately adjacent. So there are wetlands next to this parcel, parcel E, but the actual area that's going to be developed on is upland. The site plan was previously approved through Travesta, and moving forward with this PSP amendment, they also will still have the county 30-foot wetland buffers around those wetlands, so they will be protected. With respect to the eagle's nest, it was noted in the environmental report that there is a nest, MN007. It's located on the south side of, southeast side of the wetland that is just south of where they're proposing to develop, but it hasn't been shown as active in a decade or so. If there is an active nest, then the developer would have to consult with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and if there's any proposed construction within the nest protection zones, they would need to go through that consultation and possibly obtain permitting. But as of now, it was shown as an inactive nest.
What's considered an active nest?
You have the nest that's there with the bald eagle. So if you see a bald eagle, and it's just a flyover, that's not considered active. So there'd have to be a pair of parents nesting in a nest that's present in the tree.
Okay. For the public purpose, if they're asserting the bald eagles on the property, they would need photographic evidence to show the bald eagle in the nest. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any additional questions for environmental?
Just to clarify, when you're saying the area that they're looking at developing, are you referring to also parcel E that is being?
Yes, sorry, parcel E specifically. Parcel E is upland, but it's immediately adjacent to existing wetlands.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I had a question for Nise Greer, if she could address
Sure.
whether the county, what the county drawland in this irrigation issue.
Sure.
So at this point, the irrigation for Travesta is private. I do believe they set it up originally to connect to a county system. If the county system is extended down 69th in front of Travesta, but at the time, it wasn't extended that far. Our code states that they just cannot use potable water. It doesn't require them to extend it to their site. We always encourage it if it's directly adjacent to, but at the time, it wasn't and it still isn't directly adjacent to the site. And the EOR might be able to speak to that more, but I believe it was set up for a future connection if it did come that way. So at this point, it's a civil matter. The only thing that we would get involved in is if there was some sort of a code enforcement case made that the required landscaping for the commercial was dying or not kept up or something like that. So that's the only time we would then get involved at this point.
Yes, sir. I agree. Any additional questions for the applicant before we do closing comments?
Question for staff.
Can we have staff questions and closing comments?
Has staff looked at the original proposal from 2015 that was approved as it relates to, I guess my question is, was this portion of land always intended for commercial use? Or was it described as open land for Travesta community, if you will?
It appears as open land on the previous approval.
In 2015?
And all subsequent amendments, yes.
Where was commercial proposed on the property in 2015?
So the original approval approved 100,000 square feet along 69th Street East.
Pardon me. So what is on the property that was proposed to be commercial in 2015? What is it now?
Commercial. I'm sorry, say that again?
So in the 2015 proposal, site plan, what have you, right, the property was approved in 2015 to have 100,000 square foot of commercial, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I guess my question is, is that, is there, where was the $100,000 of commercial property supposed to be on this, when it was proposed in 2015?
To the north of the total project area, so along 69th Street East. There was no commercial internal to the development. There was no commercial on any other, there was no other thoroughfare at the time that would be appropriate to have commercial at.
Okay. So, and there's commercial property there now?
Yes.
So this is an additional 100,000 or 150,000?
It's an additional 50,000, and for commercial parcel E, they're only proposing a maximum of 10,000. So they would have to fit 10,000 square feet maximum on .23 acres, meeting all wetland buffers, all buffer setbacks,
Sure.
building setbacks, any other open space requirements or landscaping requirements.
But in 2015, this was just open space proposal?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any additional questions for staff? Thank you, sir. Can we have applicants closing comments?
Hi, again, Linda Stewart with Morris Engineering, and Matt will also come up and speak to the engineering side of this, to try to answer a couple of the questions that the residents of Travesta had. As far as FPNL restoring power after a hurricane, you know, obviously Coulter has absolutely no control over the power restoration. We've all been through that, and you're watching the trucks and hoping your neighborhood's next. MI Homes, being a developer within Travesta, as with any developer that comes in and builds within an overall development, the original developer has no control over what another developer does or does not build or, you know, contract with an individual lot owner on this. I believe staff has answered the questions as far as the, you know, eagle's nest and the irrigation on 69th, but Matt can speak to that a little bit more. Parcel E, being open area, as we stated, we have 53 percent open space on this property. It's not a designated preserved open area where there's no construction to ever be developed. They still have additional area that they are allowed to develop within this, within this as far as They still have additional area that they are allowed to develop within this as far as the parameters of the FAR are concerned. They have over twice as much open space as they're required to have for the development. So, you know, as James stated, the commercial area is up along 69th Street. Now Buffalo Road is going to be extended, you know, 120-foot wide right-of-way, four-lane down to Mendoza. It then opens up the area for development on some of these open space parcels where commercial neighborhood uses make sense for an overall development. As far as the entitlements, we are asking right now for the additional 50,000 square feet of commercial so that additional commercial may be developed. We cannot have an end user until we actually have an entitlement to be able to build. You know, Coulter is not going to be, you know, or may not be the end user of a commercial use, but we have to have the entitlements in place for the commercial square footage before someone can come in and then propose an end use for, you know, parcel E or for additional square footage up in the commercial area along 69th. And with that, I will let Matt continue with the engineering portion of it.
Thank you. Matt Morris, for the record, I have been sworn. A couple of things just to clarify that were brought up by some of the neighbors, the pond that was being discussed. I just want to make sure everybody's clear on kind of the lay of the land that we're talking here. The pond that irrigation is pumping out of is on the extreme east part of the site. What we're proposing and what we're asking for right now for the additional square footage in parcel E is on the extreme west side of the site, adjacent to I-75. So parcel E and the existing commercial parcel aren't touching anything with regard to any of the areas around the lake where the irrigation pump is coming out of. So, you know, I think Karab did a good job explaining that, you know, there are two adjacent wetlands to the parcel E, but they're not in the parcel E .23 acre area with regard to irrigation. You know, obviously, the irrigation company has to operate within the parameters of the permit. I'm not sure what they're talking to residents about as far as how often water's happening or not happening or what, but I do know that they have their parameters they have to work in within their water use permit. We're also happy to explore the possibility of just putting in a separate irrigation well for the .23 acre site. You know, that's a fairly small area, again, with, you know, putting in a parking lot and a 10,000 square foot building there. There's not going to be a whole lot of irrigated area to begin with, so we could potentially irrigate that with its separate irrigation well. The additional square footage that's being requested, so again, we've got the 10,000 square feet that we're limiting ourselves to on parcel E. The remainder of that would be in the area that the current commercial parcel is being developed up on 69th Street. So that's to give us a little extra room there to provide some uses that are being looked at there at the existing commercial parcel, so that's not going to have an impact on the irrigation. That's already part of the commercial parcel that's been developed. I think that was it. I mean, I do, again, want to point out, you know, Coulter has developed a number of projects in Manatee County. I've worked with them since 2012. You know, Coulter's provided a lot of right-of-way. They've funded a lot of improvements for the county. They've funded portions of Buffalo Road. They've funded other improvements, 49th Street and their other projects. They've funded and constructed parts of Sawgrass Road. My opinion is Coulter's always been a good partner with the county and working with the county on providing utility infrastructure and roadway infrastructure on their projects. I think that's evidence on this project with working with the county on providing some large diameter force mains that go through the property that serve development on the west side of I-75 as well as on the east side of I-75. They've provided the right-of-way for Buffalo Road. They've constructed a portion of Buffalo Road and participated in all that, so just wanted to point that out as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any additional?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for you, the staff of the applicant. So what we need is stipulation that parcel E is limited to maximum 10,000 square feet commercial. Because it's not stipulated. The first time I heard that is just now.
The applicant has a site data table on their PSP, and in the PSP, they show the individual parcels and maximum square footages for each. On that table for parcel E, they've identified 10,000 square feet. It's not stipulated, but it's part of the approved square footages.
Well, it's misleading in stipulation A6 then, because we're allowing a maximum commercial square footage, and I see 150,000 square feet project-wide on stipulation A6. It's not written correctly then.
The... One moment, please.
Well, the stipulation is different, not just the terminology.
Stipulation A6 reads the maximum commercial square footage shall not exceed 150,000 square feet .21 FAR. That's project-wide, not specific to a specific parcel. The original stipulation read the maximum square footage shall not exceed 100,000 square feet .14 FAR, and that was approved with the different parcels having specific commercial maximums.
What I know is the order's title indicates the current parcel E, and you're adding 50,000 square feet. There's no breakdown here. I need thinking these clarifications, stipulations, is all I'm saying if this goes forward. I was just staff working the applicant to figure that out in stipulation A6. Right about the whole staff report before this meeting, I didn't know there's only 10,000 square feet on that one parcel E, and that's the crux of this whole thing today. So I think we need to limit it expressly in the stipulation if we're going to go forward.
Staff will speak with... Will convene and formulate a better stipulation.
Well, it's not in the stipulation, and that's what I have to look at.
Any additional questions for staff?
I had a question for the applicant, just for clarification. It was stated that you need the enhancements before you can find a suitor for the property. But in my experience, unless I'm just understanding a lot of the process, it's not uncommon to already have a suitor for a property and then seek for the enhancement. Would you agree or disagree?
Entitlement.
Entitlement, sorry.
Entitlement. I mean, I think I stated before that I think they have had some conversations. There's nothing that's been... There's no contract that's signed yet, so they've been looking into it. They have done market studies to know that there's desire there for commercial, but there's no, you know, they haven't signed a contract with Chick-fil-A or something, but they've looked at potential uses, they've done market studies, and they have spoken with potential users.
Because I think also a part of this issue is not knowing what is going to go in there.
Well, I think we know to the extent that it's limited to what the code allows, so we can't do anything that's outside what the code allows without having to come back before you all and say that we'd like to do something that's not a neighborhood-serving commercial use identified in the code.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Discussion among the board?
I'd like to... Just a few... I'll go ahead and just start some comments and discussion here as far as this goes. So I think, first of all, I don't know that it's in our purview to try to wrestle with the irrigation issue that's going on in the neighborhood right now, per se. But I think that it's important... I mean, Mr. Morris was just talking about a potential development that's helped the neighborhood. A car wash could go there, which would totally exacerbate even more water issues that we have there. So I think there's some bigger items that we would tend to wrestle with, with the additional commercial on the irrigation side and just on the water comments alone. I think the timing on this question on parcel E, I continue to struggle with. I don't... I see... I'm not getting a good feeling about what the plan is there. 10,000 square feet on .23 acres is a significant amount of square footage on a very small piece. So I've got a big concern on the timing of parcel E, and again, I think from my perspective, I'm not going to be supporting this as it is written right now, because I just don't think it's in the best public interest at this point. That's all I have to say.
Well, no doubt parcel E's the hookup on, I'd imagine, most of everybody's on the planning. I'm with Mr. Ziegler. We can't really solve the irrigation problem one way or the other. That's a private issue, but that's kind of my thoughts on.
I echo those same sentiments. I'm concerned we're talking about, you know, .23 acres and 10,000 square feet, which is three and a half times smaller than the 2,300 square foot Chipotle that we approved on .81 acres. So that's a little concerning to just see that vast difference in saying that we can fit, you know, five times that size on a smaller parcel there. I'm also concerned that the staff map showed that that parcel E is in flood zones on either side of the property. It has surrounded by wetlands. It is, you know, has native upland as well, and, you know, in speaking with different environmental departments within the county, I understand we have a major, you know, we've protected wetlands for so long, we're also seeing upland habitat loss. So just with all of the unknowns and the concerns with parcel E, I'm going to be a no vote on this today.
I'm in agreement with my fellow commissioners. The amorphous, we don't know what's going there yet. You could do a car wash. You could do another storage unit, which I wish everybody would take the temperature of the communities they're building in. Buffalo Road, 69th, I drive that daily multiple times. Those roads are nightmares right now, as it stands, without... And I know commercial is not increasing the density as much as, but, you know, there's residential as well. And for parcel E, I just feel that there has to be a higher and better use for that parcel. So for me, it's a no also.
May I have a motion?
I make a motion to deny.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. Prosser, second by Ms. Gaye, to deny.
Oh, it says to approve/denial. The motion itself is to deny.
Look at the motion below.
But it's to approve/denial. I know it doesn't make sense, but it's how we have to do it.
So motion passes 6-0 to deny.
Mr. Chair, we have a brief break.
Yep. Let's do a 10-minute break. Be back at 10:45. Let's do a 10-minute break, be back at 10:45.
Thank you.
... being ice cream cone. So, which we decided is a game changer on road trips, we need to do that. And it'll drive me crazy.
Thanks. I just know, I'm like, I want to give her a hug.
Call a meeting back in the session, please read number nine.
Item number nine, PDR 2403ZP, Erie Road Residential. We have CJ Mills here for staff. It's a rezone of approximately five acres, generally located .25 miles east of 69th Street East and approximately .28 miles west of Harrison Ranch Boulevard on the south side of Erie Road, and it's commonly known as 8915 Erie Road. It's a rezone from A to PDR, and it's approving a preliminary site plan for up to seven single-family detached units.
We have applicant's presentation.
Good morning, yep, still good morning, good morning. My name is Patricia Petroff, I'm a resident of Manatee County, and I have been sworn, I'm a local land use attorney, and I do represent the applicant. This board heard this, I believe, in June. In June, I apologize, I did have a pre-booked vacation that I was on, and there were some issues in understanding the relationship between the Erie Road right-of, Erie Road extension, you know, it's going to be four-lane, it's in design, I think it's at 60% right now, and the drawings needed to be made more clear. We've used the time since that June Planning Commission to meet with staff and submit new drawings and work out all the questions, at least I hope we've worked out all the questions, well, I know we've done it with staff, but whatever questions you may have. I'm going to ask the planer, Linda Stewart, to come up and give you a quick presentation to show what the site plan looks like now. We show all the right-of-way that the county needs for Erie Road, which is more than we are required by the comp plan to provide, but we're showing it, it will impact what we call Lot 3, basically, it will obliterate Lot 3. But, I've been here long enough, and some of the rest of you have as well, that sometimes the best-laid plans that the county have don't work out. You know, the most recent example is 59th Street Extension, that has been completely dropped, because I represent several clients along 59th Street, and we haven't heard from the county in probably a year about that extension. I do not think county is actively pursuing it, and so arguably, those people have the right to move on with their lives and use their property. So, I'm going to ask Linda to come up and explain the subdivision plan, and then I'll come back up for some closing comments.
Hi, good morning again, Linda Stewart, I have been sworn. Let's see, I don't think you guys want to, me to rehash everything we did last time, right? Okay, I will go on to, we have added one specific approval request as a result of discussions with staff and the changes that we made to the site plan. The 20-foot roadway buffer along Erie Road is being reduced to a 10-foot buffer, that's the other specific approval request. Here's the new site plan after the discussions with staff, showing the buffer located outside of Lot E, or Lot 3, as well as the right-of-way indications for Erie Road, and we had the discussions last time about all of the right-of-way being taken from the south side of Erie Road, instead of it being split between the north and the south side because of the railroad right-of-way along the north side. And we all know the difficulties you can have trying to coordinate with a railroad, and so they're taking everything from the south side.
Ms. Stewart, is what you're showing right now what's currently in the application? Because it looks different to me than what's in the staff report. It's not showing, I guess, the, yeah.
That was what we had.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, the current construction plans that Patricia mentioned are at 60% for Erie Road, and they show a right-of-way of 148 feet that's required for this road widening, while the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan, Table 5-1, shows a right-of-way for 120 feet for this area. That's for the 20-year right-of-way needs for the portion of Erie Road. This is a copy of the plan set, and the additional right-of-way is impacting Lot 3. Let's see if I can go back to that, here's a blow-up of that area. The typical section also indicates a 12-foot wide multi-use path to be constructed along the south side of Erie Road, which creates additional impacts to proposed Lot 3. As a result of the removal of the south side of Erie Road, there's a possibility that this may result in the removal of a portion of Lot 3 when the county reaches a stage of right-of-way acquisition for the road right-of-way needs in the future. The remaining portion of Lot 3 would be left as non-conforming until the county begins construction and/or coordinates with the property owner. The property owner is moving forward with his plans to develop his property in accordance with current codes and regulations as established in the Manatee County Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan. This is a seven-lot, single-family subdivision. Lot 1 is owned by the applicant and occupied by the applicant of this property. The only other specific approval request we have is noted for the existing pond next to Lot 4, from a 30-foot waterfront setback to a 25-foot waterfront setback. Code states you can have 25-foot if you're a subdivision. We're not a subdivision yet, but we will be, and so therefore, once they plat, they will be in conformance with the 25-foot required setback.
Ms. Stewart?
Yes.
I think I'm just hung up on this, but the site plan on page six of the staff report, it's showing some blue lines that are kind of more onto Lot 3, can you kind of help walk me through?
This one?
It's on page six of the staff report.
Yeah.
There we go, there we go, okay, perfect.
Yeah, I'm just trying to show different scenarios. Okay. And with that, you know, it is my professional opinion that this is in compliance with the Manatee County Land Development Code, as well as the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan, as designed for its current state and request. And with that, I will hand it back to Patricia.
The one thing that I think Ms. Stewart failed to mention, we also moved the access driveway to meet what I believe Mr. May had requested, so it is, I believe, now 250 feet from the driveway at Ancient Oaks.
Yes.
So, we've moved that for the separation requirement, which was, I know, a discussion point at the June Planning Commission meeting, and as far as, I have emails from staff saying, "Thank you, yes, that's fine." The, when Erie Road, if this much right-of-way is taken for the Erie Road construction, and quite frankly, if any right-of-way is taken, and some of it, when you redevelop, is required to be put on your site plan, but this is more than what would normally be required, regardless, it makes the five-acre lot a non-conforming lot. And so, this is why it's the right time for my client to move forward with a plan that allows a different type use, which is now large residential lots. The lots are of a size that are compatible with the lot size in Ancient Oaks. The lots are bigger than some of the surrounding PDR projects, one of which I worked on, which is Parish Lakes, which is on the other, behind the railroad tracks and behind the school sites on the other side of the road, and that's noted in your staff report, the varying lot sizes in the area. But this is an area that I consider to be infill, because it's surrounded, you know, and far east on Erie Road, there's larger and bigger subdivisions with smaller lots. So, it's an appropriate use of the property. There's water sewer on Erie Road, Erie Road's being upgraded to accommodate more traffic, but these additional six lots isn't going to impact the traffic on Erie Road as it currently exists, it has minimal impact on Erie Road. So, we've worked hard with staff to address current standards and to address future needs of the county for expansion of Erie Road, and we respectfully request that you approve this today, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes.
Just a point of clarification, please, I want to make sure I understand. So, as it stands with that Lot 3, it's non-conforming, so it would stay like that, nothing can be built on that Lot 3, we'd have to, they'd have to come back to the county?
When you, Lot 3 currently has, there's one house on five acres, it's Zone A, that's a conforming use. Once any property gets taken by condemnation, it's legally non-conforming. There are some language in the Land Development Code about that, but just because there's language in the Land Development Code to say, "Oh, we recognize, we made it legally non-conforming, you can continue to use it for your, you know, five-acre, you know, one house on five acres," mortgage companies and banks and people who might want to buy the property, they don't view that the same way. You know, I've been a land use attorney for 47 years, I've, my office does probably, I don't know anymore, I'll just say, we do $20 million of closings a year, and I'm very keenly aware of how fickle buyers and mortgage companies can be. And so, it does devalue a lot to make it legally non-conforming. So, with the knowledge that Erie Road needs to be expanded, nobody, we have no issue, no question, no problem with that, but to have a legally non-conforming lot, it's in the client's best interest to now, this, you know, if there was, is ever a right time to move forward with doing a rezone which makes your land compatible with all of the subdivision that has been going on around it, this is certainly the right time to do so.
I like the project, I think it's appropriate place for it, I'd rather see houses there than retail, more schools. It's just, the Lot 3 is very confusing to me.
And, to be honest, Lot 3, if the county moves forward with Erie Road, Lot 3 is not going to be viable.
Viable.
And so, the only reason it's there is, again, sometimes the county doesn't move forward for decades with a project.
So, then would they take?
I mean, when I moved into my house 36 years ago, off of Morgan Johnson Road, the bridge over the Braden River was on the map as an important project, it just got, you know, it just got built in the last five years, and now the rest of the road just opened over the interstate, opened, I think, on Saturday. So, sometimes, we have all of these capital improvement programs and things in the future land use, comp plan, you know, capital improvements, and we keep track of when roads need to be constructed and why they need to be constructed, but sometimes it just takes a long, long time to get it done. And so, or sometimes the county abandons the project, so as far as I can tell, the county has backed away from four-leaning 59th Street West, because I had at least two clients who had gotten eminent domain letters, and that project has seemingly been inactive for at least a year, if not longer. I mean, I don't know, and maybe, maybe the county attorney's office can tell me whether or not the county commission has actually abandoned the project, or whether it's just in limbo, but those things happen, so if that happened here for any reason, then Lot 3 might become viable.
So, we all know things are taken out of the CIP all the time, but let's say it stays in there and the county doesn't widen the road for 10 years, does that mean a house is on Lot 3, and then the county has to purchase that house, or take it by eminent domain?
Or voluntarily purchase. I don't think the county can not allow someone to use their property in conformance with the comp plan and with the Land Development Code and everything that that entails, and hold it hostage, as your example, for 10 years. I mean, we understand it's at 60%, I'm told it should be at 90% sometime by the end of 2025. My understanding is that when it is at 90%, that's when the county moves forward to start acquiring property. So, this will either happen, or it won't, in fairly short order, and if the world changes in ways that are unpredictable, and the county, for whatever reason, decides that they can no longer do, you know, no longer construct the extension to Erie Road, then at some point, I think, you know, I'd have to come back and say, you know, "We are exercising our right to use that lot." But to leave it blank, to leave it with nothing, and have the Erie Road project fall apart, you know, in a year and a half, for whatever reason, then I would have, my client would have to pay $10,000 to come back and put a lot number on that lot, and that's not appropriate either. So, that's why it's there. You know, when we started this, Erie Road was not at 60%. You know, when we started this, Erie Road was not at 60%. It was, you know, it was, I don't know, and Denise can tell me, you know, when the county hired the design firm, if they did hire a design firm, to actually, or when the county commission authorized the county staff to start design of Erie Road. But this has been in, in the system for almost 15 months, which is frightening to me for a seven-lot subdivision. But a lot of it had to do with, you know, Erie Road kept marching on, so we have now accommodated what the county says is going to happen. And if they get to 90% by, by the end of the year, then everything will be fine and there'll be a negotiation for purchase.
Ms. Petrov, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
So in essence, the project that you're proposing here today is essentially the same as you were last time. The factual circumstances on the funding of the expansion of Erie Road, I think, was 60% last time that you were here as well. The modifications that you've made are to the PSP, kind of showing the, I guess, the right-of-way setbacks and a little further clarification, but I am accurate in stating it's more or less the same, other than the PSP modifications or clarifications that you indicated.
Yes, sir. We have very clearly showed it, showed on the site plan what the county requested right-of-way will be, and the driveway has been moved, as discussed at the last Planning Commission meeting, to have, create the 250-feet separation from the driveway in Ancient Oaks. And I think Mr. May requested that, or said he, he needed that. And the, the wetland 25 feet for the wetland buffer remains the same, and we are asking for a 10-foot road buffer on a 14,744-square-foot lot. So if, you know, so right-of-way gets taken, instead of having a 20-foot road buffer, we're requesting a 10.
Again, I'm just getting to the, I'm just getting some clarification. So what we see up here, because I, I mean, Mr. Stewart, you were saying some different scenarios. This is with the expansion right-of-way in it, correct?
Yes, sir.
And the other, the previous slide or whichever one has it, is simply as it is now with the 10-foot buffer in the darker green and the other buffer in the lighter green? Is that?
What other one?
There was another drawing that doesn't have the, the right-of-way over Lot 3.
There's only one 10.
No, there was not. There was another drawing that doesn't have the right-of-way over Lot 3.
Well, on page five of the staff report, there's a black and white of this one.
No, 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 no. Ms. Stewart, you've got some, there, there you go, right there. So what's, the difference in this one and the one we were just looking at?
Seven earlier one?
Is this is current?
That just takes the lines off.
As it is?
Yes. The other one takes the right-of-way lines off, but this one shows where the right-of-way will be.
The future right-of-way could be needed for Erie Road
Yes, sir.
Widening. Yeah, I said potential, yeah. Okay.
Trying to keep this as simple as you can. The proposal effectively is limiting your client to building only Lot 1 through 7 with Lot 3 omitted.
It's not, we're asking for it to be approved, and we are acknowledging that it's subject to perhaps an imminent right-of-way acquisition.
But I think if, if I'm not mistaken, it kind of falls back to where we were last time in terms of the timing of the project and the expense to taxpayers of having to take the property as is now, not built on, versus a property with a home on it.
We're, we are not planning to sell this lot in the short term. We are absolutely going to give the county the opportunity, if they do what I've been told, if they're at 90% by the end of the year, they should start negotiations for purchase. We have sent my client, I have not, my client has sent Mr. May some emails asking for him to contact him. He has chosen really not to. I think the only communication from Mr. May has been, "We're almost at the point where we're going to go get appraisals," so I guess that's something.
Sure.
But, you know, in order to resolve that issue, we, the staff needs to be in a position to negotiate with us. But again, it's not, the county, the county will be, is requesting more right-of-way than we are required to provide by the Comprehensive Plan. I'm fine with that. They're going to have to purchase that more right-of-way one way or the other, but I don't think you can refuse to act on a properly presented application because the county might want to buy it in the future. That, I mean, I might want to buy your property, but I won't tell you when. You know, but, you know, I'm, I think my client would be fine with a stipulation if the county doesn't act to purchase it within two years or three years.
That's where I was going.
I'm fine, I think, and I can ask, and he's right here in the audience, but
I agree with you in terms of fairness to your client, right? They shouldn't be having to wait on the government to do whatever they do on their timeline. I think that's unfair. To me, it makes sense to say something along the lines of, "We agreed not to build on this property for, say, 24 months, at which time we have the right to do what we should have had the right to do from the beginning, but we're willing to wait this timeline." Like, to me, it makes sense that, I get your, I get your comparison to 59th Street.
Mm-hmm.
I think Erie Road is being built, widened, is going to be widened.
I just don't know if we can add a stipulation like that. I think, let time tell and let's go ahead and
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but the comp plan gives the board the directive that if they think it's bad timing for this project, as a legal reason, not to approve it.
But if you didn't know that Erie Road was going to be expanded, you wouldn't know about the timing.
We wouldn't have had this discussion in the first place.
Perhaps someone from Public Works, I think Prani, can give a, or someone can give a clarification please, okay?
Denise Gruefer, staff, I have been sworn. So just dialoguing here a little bit with Public Works right now, Scott May, county engineer, recently completed the alignment memorandum, and it's, well, it's going to be completed in another week, is what they're saying, and they have not done the appraisal yet, but that will be the next step, to get, to do appraisals for anything that they're showing they need. I mean, they may work quicker for one develop, one parcel over another if they need to.
I mean, after this, it still has to go to the board and
Yes, it still has to go to the board and
Still.
It's going to the board on October 9th, so if, if the alignment memo is done in a week and they're going to start talking or hiring appraisers, then they may have more feedback and say that they're going to be ready to negotiate with my client, you know, in November. You know, I don't know, but again, it's, I, I just don't, I, I struggle with, we all know it takes time to design a road, you know, I know that, you know, I've been doing this a long time. I understand that. But this should have been approved a long time ago. It shouldn't have taken, you know, we've been in process for, what, a year and a half? And a lot of it had back and forth with the right-of-way issue, and because when we started, we showed a plan that just had the required right-of-way as set forth in the Comprehensive Plan, which is, you know, a half, half-right-of-way, you know, you know, both sides are supposed to have 50%, and then the issue with the railroad track came up. Okay, fine. So then, you know, so we went through a series of plans, but every time the next plan went in, they made, they went up to, you know, 40%, and I don't know the percentages, you know, 40, 50, 60, and it kept shifting, and that's what has caused the delay. As far as I know, this is what they want, but it has changed quite a few times in, you know, as, as a process. I'm not saying they did it on purpose, it's just the process of trying to design a road in a, in a constrained area, because I know where that railroad track is, because I had to cross it whenever I went to Parish Lakes to visit my client. So I know exactly what the constraint is, and I also know that it is impossible to deal with CSX. Nobody wants to deal with CSX. So I'm just respectfully asking you to approve this so we can get onto the board, we can, and maybe by the board, it'll be, you know, that much further to getting resolved, the right-of-way issue.
Any additional questions? Thank you. Could we have staff's presentation?
Good morning, CJ Mills with staff, and I have been sworn. Again, this is for the Erie Road Residential Project. I think we all know the site location by now. It's been in the UF3 Future Land Use category and, since the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan, and it's been Zoned A, Generative Agriculture, since 1990. Again, this is in these range of potential uses, you can see that low, medium-density residential development within the UF3 Future Land Use category. Again, some of the differences between A and PDR, A is really for the preservation of the agricultural land and, and protection of encroachment from incompatible uses. This is not agriculturally-used land, and you can see the, some of the surrounding residential developments to the east and to the northwest, or northeast, sorry. And I think this is, this is what is in the staff report, this is the, the final site plan that's in there, that does show the appropriate 10-foot roadway buffer with a specific approval, and then also the, again, the future right-of-way setback requirement for us, which I believe is at 29.1 feet. It is for up to seven single-family dwelling units, coming in at 1.4 dwelling units per gross acre, and a maximum height of two stories. These are the specific approvals, the previously mentioned, the five-foot reduction from the 30 feet to 25 feet for the waterfront setback, and then that 10-foot roadway buffer in that gray running north-south. Again, these are just some of the, the areas surrounding it. You can see residential development with Ancient Oaks, Harrison Ranch, and then you have the Parish Lakes, DRI, GDP to the northeast with the Parish Charter School to the, to the west, and then the Buffalo Creek Golf Course, I believe, to the northwest. The transportation link capacity analysis, the adopted level of service is D, and with the, the addition of these small residential units, it's still going to be operating at that. Public facilities, there are public, there are potable water infrastructure, wastewater infrastructure, and reclaimed water infrastructure, and then also there are numerous schools, Parish Charter, as seen on the, to the west, and then Mills Elementary, and then Buffalo Creek, right around a mile to the northwest. You see the flood plain, stormwater, there's a small portion of the site that is in the flood zone, but it is the pond, and then to the east, there is a flood zone, but there's also a pond. It is within FEMA X and A zones, the adjacent flood elevations, 30.3, and off-site AE zone, a ditch that project, that the project outfalls to is not maintained by the county, and the Buffalo Canal and Frog Creek watershed is what the property's in. Post-development, stormwater runoff to be 50% of the pre-developed, developed runoff for the 25-year, 24-hour storm event, and then 150% water quality treatment is required. Some of these positive aspects of the site is that it is a low-traffic generator, then there's an existing sidewalk, sidewalk along the north side of Erie Road. The project is appropriate infill development, as Ms. Petrov said, no evidence of native uplands, wetlands, or endangered plant species have been found on site. Some of those negative aspects, there's no existing bicycle lanes on Erie Road, and there's no transit stop on Erie Road per the MCAT system map. Some of those mitigating measures will be that bicycle lanes will be included with the capital improvement, improvement project if it goes through, and at time of FSP, some of the project shall comply with all applicable standards of the LDC. In conclusion, the current requests can be found to be consistent with the policies of the Comprehensive Plan and compatible with the applicable review standards of the LDC. And I think one more thing I do just want to say is that, yes, the, with the right-of-way setback shown on the plan, and the buffer shown on the plan, and the change to the 250 feet away from the entrance on Ancient Oaks, all of our issues in the digital planner and first cell have been resolved. And I'll be here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the staff? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to open up for public comment. Please come up and state your name, that you've been sworn, where you live.
My name is Robert Olson. I'm a resident of Manatee, and I have been sworn in. I just want to introduce myself, I'm the landowner and also the resident, and I just wanted to introduce myself, and I want to keep the lots as big as possible, and I also live on the property, and I'll continue to live on a piece of property, and these are going to be high-end homes, they're not going to be small lots with minimal amount of living area. So I just wanted to introduce myself, and I appreciate all your time.
Thank you. Next person, please.
I wasn't sworn in.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak today? Please raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations you're about to make to the Planning Commission are truthful and accurate?
I do.
Thank you. When you step to the podium, please state your name, county of residence, and if you've been sworn.
Paula Newman, Manatee County, and I have been sworn in. I am a resident of the Ancient Oaks subdivision, and my property does back up to Mr. Olson's and the property that we are talking about here. I have several issues with this plan going on, and actually, all of the properties and my neighbors that do live right through there all have issues with this project that's going on. Actually, in Ancient Oaks, I'm the longest person that's lived there. I've lived there 22 and a half years. I was the second house that was built in the subdivision, so I had been there long before his house was even built there, so it's been a great neighborhood to live in, and for this to be built is very disappointing if that's going up behind where I'm at currently. Currently, I know, from looking at it, it's going to be, I know it's going to have around at the end, it's a one-way access in and one-way out, so we're dealing with emergency vehicles. For them getting in and out is going to be very difficult if they get in. I know it's going to be a circle at the end, but still with one way, it's difficult with those large vehicles to get in and out, and I did not see another way for them to get in and out of there. Flooding is another issue on Erie Road right there. I don't know, I know at least one of you on there travel that road very often, but if you go down through there, and I do have pictures that I have taken down through theirs on June 11th, and then again on July 28th, and if you take it in, that road will flood, and I don't know if I put it down here.
Before you use anything, if you're going to incorporate anything into the record, ma'am, is that something that we can keep or that the clerk can keep so that way?
Yep, you can keep them.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
This isn't even on heavy rain, this is just in 15 minutes of rain on one day on June 20, on June 11th, where that's flooding, and that is right before his house, his property there, right before our subdivision, in 15 minutes of rain, that's Erie Road where it's flooded, where the ditch just overflows and goes in. And that happens every time we get that rain, the same day. time we get that rain, the same day, the same way, you can see where it always is. We have to contact the county, and they put out signs all the time saying high water through there. So that road currently floods as you go through. And as I said, it's not just one time. Again, I took it again after the last time it flooded, and we're talking July twenty-eighth, which was just recently. There it is, right by the school, as you're going by the school. It's at the there, and then again, this is actually his property right here, this is the front, his entrance, as you can see, this is his driveway here currently, where it's all flooded up in his property, and along the roadway here, it's all flooded as you go through there. And just trying to get down through that road, and when you're adding more fill in there, it's just all flooding. That's what happens along Erie Road right there, and the county has to put up signs all the time with it. During the hurricane last year, it was completely flooded through there. Trying to get through there, we were pushing vehicles out all the time because they were flooded. So, of course, when they develop Erie Road and make it forward lanes, I'm hoping that flooding improves, and we won't have that anymore, but currently, that is what we have to deal with now. And like I said, that was just in fifteen minutes of rain. Next, we also have just the congestion that's on there at Sixty-Ninth and Erie where the new road is at. You have the new elementary school, middle school right there, you have the new high school, Parish Community High, just two miles down, you got Harrison Ranch subdivision, you got North River Ranches, you got the new Buffalo Creek, Virga Mills, and then you got SCF Parish, that's supposed to be starting at the end of this year, starting to be built going down through there. It's just the congestion. I know it keeps being said, oh, six more houses won't make a difference, but just trying to pull out of Ancient Oaks now is like pulling out on 301. The congestion is just unbelievable trying to get out of our subdivision now. All I keep hearing is expansions and asking for exceptions, and we keep getting that all the time. We have rules, regulations, we expect you guys to help us follow those rules and regulations, and we're hoping that that's what you guys will do for us, that's to protect us, that's why we have you guys, and we're hoping that that's what you will do instead of allowing exceptions for all of these that they're asking for. Thank you.
Good morning. Mark Newman, Manatee County resident, and I have been sworn. To go off a little bit more of what my wife was talking about, I took some pictures, all the views that we've been seeing have been aerial views, and it looked like trees and stuff along the property lines. But let me show you this picture here, and this is actually standing from my, my pool deck, and I have, you can have these copies as well. And this is a temporary dirt roadway, this is the back of my property. We're talking about a very short distance. I then got another picture where I stand at my property line, and there's a temporary dirt road, I think a temporary RV, and then this picture here, I look to the left, which would be going down where this road is going to be going, and then to the right, where the additional homes and residences are, and that dirt, that road is just going to come down here. I know we keep focusing on the, I thought it was four-hundred feet that the, that they talked about last year, or last, in June, about the separation between Ninety-First and the entrance. Now I'm here in two-hundred-and-fifty, so I'm not sure, I could have been mistaken. And doesn't matter where the roadway entrance starts, as opposed to going along the back of our houses. During the June twelfth meeting, the board had asked petitioners' representatives if a neighborhood meeting had, a meeting with the neighborhood of Ancient Oaks had been discussed with the homeowners, is that, since that had not happened, I completed a survey with the seventeen homes that border his property. I was able to contact all seventeen homeowners, with the exception of one. That house is currently for sale, and no one's living in there. I have seventeen signatures, the reason why there's seventeen, there was actually one household where I spoke to the husband and wife, and they were both adamant about wanting to sign. Everybody was extremely against this proposed plan, concerned over loss of privacy, quality of enjoyment in the back of their, on their backyards, their pool decks, and another, one lady was speaking about, telling me about, she wanted to have a pool put in, and she just lived a couple doors down, and now she's thinking about not doing that because she's worried about this roadway being directly behind our houses. That's how close it'll be. You know, we're not talking about a development of four-hundred home subdivision, we're talking about, looks like maybe five, six homes, but, and then our voices would be the, the few, our voice would be the fewest, and we're not, and we're talking likely about five homes. In the survey I conducted, sixteen homeowners in Ancient Oaks would be negatively affected and are against this plan. I and the other Ancient Oak residents that I surveyed feel it would impact our privacy, negatively affect home values, and loss of enjoyment while they're in backyards. Here's a, here's the survey that I completed, and you can have the original. Basically, she just talks about the proposal, and then we feel the proposed development would have a negative effect on our privacy of homes, home values, and against the plan, plan being approved. All the homeowners, and I don't have a picture of the, the map, but if you, the site plan that was done, these are all the residents that border his property. Oh, another thing I wanted to mention was, the way that roadway is that comes off of Erie Road, so when cars pull in, you can see from this picture, there's nothing blocking it, so when cars come in, it kind of turns to the southeast a little bit. Their headlights at nighttime are just going to illuminate our backyards, anybody on their pool decks. So, and again, when they go to the roundabout, or the turnaround and come back out, they're going to do the same thing on coming in and out. So that's where I think the privacy would be. As for that separation, is it two-hundred-and-fifty now, and is it where the entrance is, or does it matter where, how the two-hundred-and-fifty foot separation between Ninety-First Avenue and this proposed driveway? So, based on the survey, the residents that would directly affect were strongly against this development being approved, and thank you for your consideration.
Any additional public comment? At this time, let's close public comment. Any discussions before we have questions for staff or applicant?
Could staff just clarify what, again, just for the record and for the public, what the actual potential through the future land use category could be of how many dwelling units could be put here per acre compared to the, what the applicant is proposing with just six additional developments?
CJ Mills with staff, again, I've been sworn. So yeah, the, the maximum you can do is three dwelling units per acre in the UF3, so potentially, they could be doing over double what they're actually requesting with smaller, smaller lots and different design and things like that. I know that they were talking about having, wanting to have bigger lots to, to, you know, actually have some, some, some property, and then the owner keeping his house as well, so I'm sure that played a factor into it.
Okay. Can you also clarify, the, the two-hundred-and-fifty feet there, it's not, it is entrance to entrance, it's not based on the back lot of homeowners in Ancient Oaks to the adjoining property, the applicant property?
So I believe that the, the actual design, when you're looking at it, is from the entrance to the entrance, yeah.
Because that was a traffic concern, is what I believe we've discussed at the June meeting, was, and so that's why that has been extended.
Yeah, that, and that was a traffic concern, and I do want to say that the additional dwellings, it takes it from one PM peak trip hour, or peak trips to nine PM peak hour trips. It was very, very low in that additional traffic. I also do want to just mention that there was some issues with the access for emergency vehicles. One, you have to be over a hundred units to, to require a second means of access, and two, I don't recall any kind of issues from the fire review for access or maneuverability, and they would have pointed that out at some point in the, in the review process.
Thank you, CJ.
And there's not a fence required between the two because they're both residential?
Yes, there's no fence required. And I will say landscaping, I know there's light concerns, I mean, there, you're not supposed to have adverse impacts, FSP review would, would mitigate for those, and I think the landscaping, though not substantial, would also mitigate for some of those impacts in the form of light.
Any additional closing comments? That's everything.
Maybe for the applicant, I would like to know what landscaping buffering is going on.
For the record, Patricia Petrov, I was surprised to see from the pictures that Ancient Oaks didn't have any buffering because it's adjacent to Ag, and so that's where the buffering should have come in. I know it's an older project, and so I know the codes were possibly different then, but I don't ever recall not having a fifteen-foot buffer between residential and Ag land, and as I think the testimony was, the, it was, there wasn't a house on it until my client bought it probably in two thousand and four, thereabouts, and so if Ancient Oaks is twenty-two years old, there should have been buffering there. I appreciate the comments and the, but on the other hand, there is no expectation if you don't own the property. I mean, I understand that people have enjoyed living next to open land for however long they've owned their houses, but the application that my client has before you completely complies with all of your codes, your comp plan, it has full access to water and sewer, the road is going to be upgraded with the bike lanes, it is not even half the density that's allowed, he wants large lots. You know, we still have a subdivision plat process to go through before we can put one shovel in the ground, and in a perfect world, Erie Road will start construction, and, you know, it, we'll get our subdivision plat in another year or fifteen months, and then my client will be able to sell some lots. So I think the timing also works for this, but because, because people are concerned about possibly their privacy, because someone is building in compliance with all codes on their property, the, you know, whether or not the new lot owners of my client's property will put up, you know, vinyl fences or wooden fences, I can't speak to that, but certainly the people at Ancient Oaks have the ability to plant a buffer or put up fences or what have you right now. So I just, I'm not discounting their concerns. I mean, every house I have bought that I have lived in, in Manatee County, was basically the last or the second to the last lot on a dead-end road with no property on my rear yard, for some of these very same reasons, because I certainly value my privacy, but it's not, it's not a vote, it's not sixteen people, we don't want it versus we want it to stay the way it is. That's not how our system works. So we are in full compliance, we have worked well with your staff to address all the issues that were raised at the last Planning Commission meeting, and as we progress through this process, I will recommend that my client contact, if, if Ancient Oaks has an HOA or that type of organization, contact them along the way so that maybe there can be some peacefulness among the neighbors. We're not trying to upset anyone, but these are very large lots, and I'm thinking that people who want very large lots also want their privacy. So I, I understand the concern, I hope it won't become a contentious issue in the future, but I think it's easily resolved, but Ancient Oaks should have had a buffer.
I have one additional clarifying question to address the flooding or stormwater concerns that are happening along Erie. Would that fall under the purview of your client in this project, or is that falling under the county with any CIP that's happening along Erie?
My client, if, as testified by Mr. Mills, my client is required to do a fifty percent reduction in discharge and a hundred and fifty percent of water quality treatment because of that particular issue, and so I trust that Mr. Morris, the engineer for the project, will, you know, meet that standard, and certainly the county will review that during the subdivision.
Sorry. We would expect to see that at time of final site plan, correct?
Yeah, and the final, preliminary plat in the preliminary slash final site plan.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Thank you.
Deliberations, motions?
I just wanted to point out, I'm voting to approve, I mean, I appreciate the public's comments today. It's one of those things that, like I said, you can build more, more could go on this than what is being proposed. I think the proposal, bigger lots, nice homes, I think it's actually going to increase the value of Ancient Oaks. Additionally, you're not going to be looking at RVs, you're going to be looking at, you know, four or five brand-new homes. So I like this very much. My request for staff is just to make a note for the commissioners to help try to figure out this whole eminent domain issue, because I, I think it is unfair to the owners about this whole Lot Three in terms of if and when the county is going to participate. Hopefully, it's a non-issue, but I would like to have that kind of more forefront for the county commissioners to consider and do some, if they do the research before the hearing, that they maybe might be able to get ahead of it before the hearing as well. So that's just my thoughts on that.
My final thoughts on the, on the project, when the project first came about in front of us, June twelfth, I, I did not like the project, the way it was set up, and especially about Lot Three. The way it's set up now, knowing that this future land use category is in UF3, knowing what that means, means, you know, three houses, if you wanted to do houses, three houses per acre, they could sell it to the school, the school could put something on the property, they could put commercial uses there. I would much rather see nice homes with large lots in, in that area. I, I think it's definitely an appropriate infill. I guess the county or the B.O.C.C. is going to have to figure out about the Lot Three. As far as the flooding, I've lived, I've lived in Ancient Oaks for twenty-one years, and we never had flooding like that before. Ancient Oaks, we're, we're lucky we sit high and dry, we had a good developer, we did have buffering, a lot of it died through just age and, and things, so I would love if Mr. Olson would maybe contact the HOA and maybe work something out there, maybe every other. You guys do something, and Ancient Oaks does something. But I, I think this project is appropriate, and I will be voting for it.
May I have a motion? Mr. Russinger, motion, seconded by Mr. or Ms. Gay. Mr. Ressinger, motion, seconded by Mr., or Ms. Gay. Ms. Ziegler, a motion.
Oh, okay.
Please cast your votes. Motion passes 6-0. I believe that's our limit for today. Any other comments from commissioners?
Just a quick question for staff. I know we've been talking about a workshop with commissioners. Are we anywhere with that?
Rachel Layton for staff. As of today, we do not have a date. I will get to work on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cracker Trail is a historic reenactment of the return of the cow hunters after driving the cattle across the state. But we still make it about 120 miles across the state, staying at various ranches and wildlife preserves, things like that, to make it across.
Well, the reason that Manatee County is Manatee County, it was one of the largest counties at one point because of agriculture. They rode 64, 66, and 98 to go across the state was an agricultural corridor. This was a path hard by cattle. So it's important, you don't know who you are until you know where you've come from. And then if you forget where you came from, you're going to repeat the sins of the past.
So we think that it's very important that we remember that Florida is a very unique geographical position in which we could grow anything all year round, and we've been in this cattle industry for a long time. And this is a celebration of that and the hope that we'll be honoring our culture and our legacy and protecting the land that feeds us.
Download the 311 app and get connected to Manatee County services.
Know what your evacuation level is. If you don't know, try the 311 app.
Search for information like trash and recycling schedules, and find out who your commissioner is via the resident